I'm going to call this meeting to order the regular session on Tuesday, June 22, 2021, in the boardroom of the administration building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:31 PM. Board members present, Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Ms. Powell Gonzalez-Fusiliere, Mr. Casey Phelan, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, Ms. Mary Casalciano and Mr. Kenny Fernandez. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this time will be given by Mr. Phelan and the pledges by Ms. Sullivan. Will you please stand?
Pray with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this glorious day. We ask that you be with each one of us and this organization as we go about the business of the district. Help us support each other, surround each other with your love, and guide us in your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas flag. I have the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. As tonight, I'm ending my board presidency. I want to remind everybody when we say the, if I leave one thing behind, tried to get everybody to do this for a while, but when we say the pledge to the American flag, it is one nation under God. They're not separated. So if you would remember that, put that in the back of your mind and remember it because it is one nation under God. Okay. We're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and termination of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters in which the attorney's duty to the district under the code of professional responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, excuse me, and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And we will return by 7:00 PM. I promise, 7:00 PM, and it is just that time just now. Welcome to the board meeting. We're going to reconvene in open session, and it is 7:00 PM. And first, Dr. Powell, we have special recognition.
Yes, Ms. Morgan, we do. And board members, I'm excited to have the Pasadena ISD Education Foundation here tonight. Let's hear it for them. As you know, we've had COVID, and they have not been able to come. And we wanted them here face to face to make three big announcements of the love and care they've given to Pasadena ISD students and staff this year. So we have our immediate past president of the foundation, Sherri Hutcherson. We have Judy Harrison, our current president of the foundation. And then, of course, Andrea Nguyen is here, our executive director of the foundation. So they're going to make some presentations and check presentations. So this is exciting. And they've got lots of people here.
I have to say, this is Sherri Morgan Hutcherson.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Good evening, Madam President and board members. I'm honored to be here tonight representing the Education Foundation. For those of you that I have not had the pleasure of meeting, as Dr. Powell said, I'm Sherri Hutcherson, Sherri Morgan Hutcherson, and I'm the immediate past president of the foundation. But I'm also a super proud product of this amazing district. As you know, the mission of our organization is to collaborate with the school district and the community to reward innovative teaching, promote educational excellence, and provide opportunities to recognize the students and the staff of this great district. It has been my greatest honor to serve with some of the most remarkable servants, both as my peers on the foundation and those community members who support our cause. Many of the supporters are seated here tonight on the platform and in our audience. If you want to see evidence of the great organization's efforts, you do not have to look any further than last year. During a pandemic, we rolled up our sleeves and got to work. Early on in the year, we wanted to distribute some of our funds to help with the school district. And we did so by giving $200,000 to virtual learning. These funds helped our district to quickly secure notebooks and MiFi's to students in order to continue their education from home. We knew that we wanted to do so much more, but just like all other events, COVID canceled all of our fundraisers one after the other. And UIL took care of our last and final and largest fundraiser last year, the McDonald's Texas Invitational. But we knew that our pride and joy, our Education Foundation's pride and joy, is putting money back in the classroom in the form of mini grants. And we couldn't sit by and do nothing. So in order to keep this tradition alive, we organized a virtual event. And we followed all CDC guidelines for social distancing. We hosted a very large, very successful telethon. And we raised $327,000. Just last month, we were blessed to distribute 53 mini grants, totaling more than $200,000 to 34 campuses in our district. I'm going to let Judy tell you about one other check that we're going to present tonight, more of our efforts. But I want you to know that more than the checks that we present here tonight, I want to recognize those that make the checks possible. We have 32 Education Foundation directors and over 200 community supporters. I'd say that's pretty amazing.
Board and Dr. Powell, I am Judy Harrison. I'm the current president of the Education Foundation. And I want to reiterate what Sherri said about the wonderful support we have from our community and our board. And we couldn't do it without you. It's a team effort. It takes all of us and our individual skills working together to make this the best school district in this state and in this nation. So I want to make sure we recognize that we are. We took what could have been an obstacle last year and made it an opportunity. And we stretched and encouraged and helped and, you know, kicked it into gear. And that's how we raise that kind of money. And that's what we're planning for future things, is to raise more money, to be able to give more grants to our teachers, to help support our schools in as many ways as possible. So and I'm dedicated to continuing that line of leadership. I'm here to present a $40,000 check to help offset the costs of AP testing. This is $10,000 more than we've been able to give in the past. It's a whole lot less than we'd like to give, but we're, as we raise more funds, we can give more money. So I'm encouraging any of you in here who have not been participating in the giving part to get involved. Our executive director, Andrea Nguyen, found a grant and applied for it from the Harris County Department of Education for $10,000. And so we added that $10,000 to our $30,000. And we are presenting to the district, to you, the board, $40,000 to help offset the cost of the AP testing. Could we please have our directors from the foundation and our trustees come to the platform so we can get a brief picture session here? So board members, that's all of our special presentations tonight in recognition. I do want to say, is Donna Summers, is she in here? Where's Donna? I know she was walking around earlier. Well, she gave us the good news that our graduation rate's up to 94%. The highest in the history of the district. So we're excited about that. We've got more good news to come, but I'll go ahead and turn it back over to you.
Well, that's awesome. And you might want to share how long it's taken to get to that point. When you became superintendent, what was our graduation rate?
Well, it started going up when we started expectation graduation. It was about 66%. So last year, it was a little over 90%. And then, of course, 94% is what Donna just got back from the state. So we won't be satisfied till it's 100, but we're going in the right direction. So a lot of these people do that work, and I just applaud you. Awesome.
Y'all are all amazing, and we're led by an amazing superintendent and her staff. No public comments. According to the policy BED local, this is related to the portion of the agenda. So we're going to move on to consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
I know that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Move to the personnel section. And I'm going to ask Mr. Kendrick if he will introduce these important administrative personnel recommendations?
Absolutely. Two times in a row, it's kind of strange. Anyway, I'm going to reapprove the classified personnel from--
Administrative.
Administrative personnel from A through G.
Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan to approve administrative personnel addenda pages A through G. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The eyes have it, motion carries. Now it's your privilege to be able to introduce these.
This is the good part of the job. We have Tracy Moody. Tracy has been approved for the position Assistant Principal for Keller Middle School for the years 2021 and '22. Congratulations. I know you have family here. We're kind of having a second run.
I have my dad and my stepmom, my sister, my brother, and two of my nephews, and my best friend, and then of course, my caller.
Congratulations, Tracy. Blanca Martinez. Blanca has been approved as Assistant Principal at Morales Elementary for 2021 and 2022. Congratulations. Do you have family here? I know you do.
I do. This is my husband, Diego Martinez, who works for Shaw Middle School, my daughter, my other daughter, and me here.
Congratulations. Sharon Tate. Sharon Tate has been approved as Assistant Principal for Shaw Middle School for the 2021-22 school year. Congratulations, your family.
Well, I'm going to count Dr. Jones and Emma Barr as my mom. They've been instrumental in my development. Mr. Higman, of course. And then my husband, Joe, my children, and four of my aides. Awesome. Mom, brothers, sisters, nephews, who have watched me and supported me and are praying and wanting the best for our family, my nephews.
All right.
Congratulations. Jamie Morecambe. Sounds like you have all friends here. How about family?
I do. My husband, Casey, is here. My sister Julie is over here. I have my CCS family, Kalina. I have my CTHS family over here. My new instructional specialist family is here as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jamie has been promoted to the position of industrial-- excuse me-- Instructional Specialist Science, IX through XII, with curriculum instruction for the 2021-22 school year. Congratulations, Jamie. Sarah Smith. Sarah has been promoted to the Instructional Specialist English Language Arts and Reading Elementary with curriculum instruction for the 2021-22 school year. You have family and a lot of friends here, I see.
Yeah. My father, my mother, my sister, and many of my work family members are here with me.
Congratulations, Sarah. Deborah Scannan Pico. Pico? Did I get it right? Sarah, Deborah has been promoted to the position of Special Education Coordinator of Evaluation Services for Special Education for the 2021-22 school year. Family, friends?
My niece, her husband, little one are at the hall. And then of course, my extended family, who I wouldn't be here without. So thank you, guys, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm so excited.
Congratulations. Patty Houston. Come out so we can see you, Patty. Patty has been promoted to Occupational Therapist in Special Education for 2021-22 school year. You have family and friends here, Patty?
I have my sons, Ethan and Aaron Cotton, who live in the house.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. That was a good presentation. We're going to move to consideration and possible approval of T-Test Teacher Appraisal Calendar for 2021-2022, as well as local procedures. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Want to remind you, you need to voice your votes so that they can be heard when they're recorded. Oh, yeah. And any of y'all that were just named that would like to leave--
Celebrate.
You're welcome to do so. And we thank you for being here and wish you well in your new positions.
Or you can stay.
Or you can stay.
Sorry. No, that's all right. I appreciate you.
Did we approve this?
Uh, you did the T test.
Okay.
You said that the teacher items, to be sure they were--
Okay, that's right. That's right. We're going to allow these for a minute to move out, and then we will proceed.
They may have to close one or two minutes.
Okay, let's go ahead and continue with the meeting. Consideration of possible approval of less than full annual appraisal waiver from formal observation for school nurses. So move. Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Okay. No action is necessary on certified personnel or support personnel. Those have already been approved. They're for information only. So we're going to move to the educational section. Consideration of possible approval of the subscription renewal contract with ESC Region 11 for Discovery Education streaming for the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $122,933.84.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the ongoing subscription with Texas State Library and Archives Commission for the 2021-2022 school year for a cost of $14,678.06.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. I'm sorry. Paola.
It's okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the inter-local agreement between the Pasadena Independent School District and Region 4 to provide Texas Student Data Systems, TSDS, and PIM support for the amount of $5,750.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Was that you, Mr. Phelan? Seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of the inter-local agreement between the Pasadena Independent School District and the Harris County for Community Youth Services to provide a youth service specialist for the summit at a cost of $41,338.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2021-2022 Memorandum of Understanding Agreement with the University of Houston Clear Lake for two BCBA graduate assistants at a cost of $32,448.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval of the 2021-20 through 2023 Project Lead the Way Grant.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion.
We just want to say, board members, this is our second elementary campus, and we're really excited. It lines up with our STEAM and STEM activities that we've outlined in our new strategic plan. So we're excited about this opportunity.
And our grant department, once again, you know, you amaze us, and we thank you for the hard work that you put into providing grants for these outstanding programs.
And our principal, Ms. Cross.
Yes, from Aldous Smith.
Very good.
Doing an outstanding job.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
So is there any discussion to this?
That was it. I just want to make you-- We're the second campus, and we're just excited about it.
Can you give a photo?
Not yet.
I didn't think so. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the Pasadena Memorial High School Band to travel to and perform at Walt Disney World's Magic Music Days in Orlando, Florida, May 6 through 10, 2022.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliere. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it, motion carries. Consideration and possible approval for the Pasadena Memorial Dance Team Orchestra, Choir, and AV Students to travel to New York City, New York, March 17 through 20, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Phelan-- Mr. Phelan, seconded by-- Sorry, Casey. Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes. I have a problem with this. And I've always encouraged and been happy to vote for things for our kids to go visit. New York City is one of the most dangerous cities in our country. Broadway hasn't even opened yet. I know this is in March 17, '22, and a lot can happen between now and then. But since there's such a lack of leadership and police funding in New York, I have a serious problem about the danger we're looking here. If we approve this, I think we should guarantee that we have insurance and that we bring this back based on what's happening in New York City before they leave.
And all of our trips, the one you previously approved and this one, would have travel insurance. I have administrators here[1579.13] I have administrators here that are part of that trip as well, so we could definitely revisit what the status is of the city at that time and look at security measures or additional security measures. This has been a longtime trip of Pasadena Memorial High School. I know I've got one of the directors back there shaking her head, but I remember when my niece went with you to this trip, and my sister went as a chaperone, so we can definitely revisit that. I have no problem with that.
We have to, because New York is not what it used to be. And we can't put our kids in that kind of danger when people shoot people with a funnel.
We want our kiddos safe.
I want you to go, but we ought to be careful.
So what do we say, Marshall? Do you want to... Dr. Powell, what do you want to do?
Well, if you approve it now, we can, of course, use the insurance to just come back as a board and revisit what the status is at that time and make sure they have timely manner of which they can get the trip.
I would appreciate that.
Yes. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next, student achievements. We have a few student achievements listed in the board book, and I bring your attention to that. We're going to... We have no policy this evening, so we're going to move to the financial section. Consideration possible approval of the budget amendments for May.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, was that you, Mr. Kendrick? Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of Bank of America Merrill Lynch FTN Financial, Cutwater Asset Management Texas Class, First Public Loan Star, Federated Investors Tech Pool, JP Morgan Chase, Morgan Stanley Smith Barney, PFM Asset Management LLC Texas Term, Texas Citizens Bank, Multibank Securities, Inc., Wells Fargo Securities LLC, Piper Jaffray, Cantor Fitzgerald, Global Financial Securities, Stifel Nicolaus, Oppenheimer and Goldman Sachs, and Compensation Group Investment Advisory Services LP, TCG, Texas Fixed Income Trust Investment Pool, is authorized brokers for investment transactions. Boy, that was a mouthful.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
The only new one to this list from last year's approval is the Texas Fixed Income Trust Investment Pool, and that's because of the rates that they were offering, so...
Very good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the resolution concerning investment policy and investment strategy review.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of interlocal contract with Region 10 Education Service Center, EdTech Exchange.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Operations section, I'm going to ask Ms. Sullivan if she'll make this motion, please.
We recommend the approval of a construction contract to Drumala Construction Company for the new Thompson Intermediate School Replacement Project in the amount of $39,509,554.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? I know there's no Thompson parents that are excited about this, but anyway. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries.
And board members, just so you know, Rusty Claus is here, the chief executive officer for Drumala, and Seth Smith, who's the vice president, so...
Very good.
They're right back there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to a beautiful building.
Yes, we are.
We appreciate the work you've done for us.
Absolutely.
In the past years.
In the past.
And currently.
You've done some great work for us before, and we do appreciate it tremendously.
Consideration possible approval of final change order number 001 for the Sam Rayburn High School Tennis Courts and Site Improvement Project in the credit amount of $22,554.1.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, number 006 for the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility project in the amount of $40,002.11.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of change order number 001 for the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility project.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Phelan. Discussion? All in favor... Pardon?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Mr. Fornoff?
There, he's coming that way.
It's an easy question, Kevin. Is it just taking a long time for us to get permits through the City of Houston?
It typically is. This was unusually long.
Yes.
Because of the type of construction with the hazardous materials, and not to mention going through the COVID, they were understaffed in their permitting department, so...
So we're finally on the road.
We are.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It's kind of shocking to have to add 299 years.
I'm telling you, it really is.
I thought it was a misprint at first.
Yeah, I know.
This is happening all over, including in Pasadena.
Yep.
Unbelievable.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the conveyance of a water meter easement for the new maintenance operations and warehouse facility project in the amount of $1.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. We're going to move to the miscellaneous section, and before we do that, I want to tell you, we've gone through this rather quickly, and I know you think, good grief, you went through this, all of this information rather quickly. We get our board books on Friday before the board meeting on Tuesday. So we have through the weekend, all day, half of the day Friday through the weekend till Tuesday before the board meeting to ask any questions that we have and to review all of the information. So we're well-prepared by the time that we get to the board meeting and have all of our questions answered. So at this time, we have the swearing-in of the newly elected board members, and let's see. We will proceed with the swearing-in of the newly elected member of the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees. And before we do that, I think I would be remiss if I did not offer a word of gratitude, even though she is not here this evening, for Ms. Maricel Kiana, who has given many years to this district and has served very... She is a... Was a tremendous help to this district, to this community, to this board, and I am grateful for everything that Maricel has given, and I think we need to give her a round of So at this time, I have issued the certificate of election for position number two, and I've asked Mr. Dexter Joyner to deliver the certificate to the candidate, and he and Mrs. Susan Croft to assist the district in swearing-in the candidate by administering the oath of office.
Do you want her to come up first?
Yes. Because I am not aware of any fact that would prohibit the qualification of the elected candidate for position number two, we will proceed with the swearing-in of the candidate. So at this time, obviously, Ms. Crystal has approached, and Mr. Joyner, will you deliver the oath of office, please?
Thank you. Okay, where are we now? Madam President, I have delivered the certificate of election to board member-elect for position number two, Crystal Davila. I stand ready to conduct the swearing-in ceremony, and Mrs. Croft is prepared to administer the written oath upon which your declaration that the board member-elect is qualified to assume their respective offices, and this lady certainly is. You may proceed with to conduct the swearing-in ceremony and administer the oath of office to her at this time. In a moment, I will ask you to raise your right hand and recite the oath of office. Following this recitation, you will step over to Mrs. Croft, this lady right here, to the board table, sign your written oath of office, which is the same as the one orally recited, and Mrs. Croft will affix her seal as a notary public for the state of Texas to the written oath, thereby concluding the swearing-in ceremony and administering the oath of office to allow you to assume your duties and responsibilities as a new board Now the moment that we've all been waiting for, and I know your family and many citizens for the Pasadena Independent School District, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. State your name, of course.
Crystal Davila.
Okay. I...
Aye.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
... affirm...
Affirm.
... that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
... the duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
... school board trustee...
School board trustee.
... for the Pasadena Independent School District.
For the Pasadena Independent School District.
And will best to my ability...
And will the best to my ability...
... preserve...
Preserve.
... protect...
Protect.
... and defend the Constitution...
And defend the Constitution.
... and laws...
And laws.
... of the United States...
Of the United States.
... and of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
We aren't quite finished yet, so let's finish it. Now you may step over so that Mrs. Croft, this lady here, can notarize your written oath of office as you... Madam President, the oath of office for Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees, position number two, has been administered to Crystal Davila, and she is ready to assume the duties and responsibilities of her new office.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Joyner and Ms. Croft. Crystal, congratulations and welcome to the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees. As a new member of this board, you may now join us at the board table and assume your duties and responsibilities as a member of this board. And as you're making your way to the board table, I want to take one last opportunity to once again thank Ms. Maricel Kiana for the numerous years of dedicated service she's Now at this time, the board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer, employee to deliberate the reassignment and duties of a public officer, and we will return as quickly as we can. Waiting, so we got our business done. So at this point in time, we're going to reorg... I don't know. Am I on?
Eric, okay, there we go.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I'm going to... We're going to reorganize the board, and so it requires a motion and a second for each position. For board president?
Madam President, I move that Marshall Kendrick serve as board president for the coming year.
Second. Who was that? Okay, thank you. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar, that Mr. Kendrick serve as board president this next year. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Next is the position of board vice president.
I move that Mrs. Morgan serve as vice president.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan, that Ms. Morgan serve as vice president. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries. Next is board secretary. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that Mr. Fernandez be board secretary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phelan, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar, that Mr. Kenny Fernandez serve as secretary. All in... Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. As have it, motion carries, and we'll certainly congratulate Mr. Fernandez. Now, board assistant secretary, do I hear a motion?
I move that Ms. Sullivan be assistant secretary.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Fusiliar, that Ms. Sullivan serve as assistant secretary. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. So this is your newly reorganized board. Mr. Kendrick will serve as president, myself will serve as vice president, Mr. Fernandez as secretary, and Ms. Sullivan as assistant secretary. And congratulations, and we look forward to it. Now it is time to proceed with public comments, and I have something that I need to read to you first, and this is topics not listed on the agenda at the end of regular meetings only. This portion of public comment is for speakers who are addressing topics not listed on tonight's agenda. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual student and/or employee or individual should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy DGBA, FNG, or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others, and in doing so, refrain from naming employees and/or students during the public comment portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. For example, teacher of fourth grade at such-and-such school. Remember, this goes for a position for any positive or negative remarks. The instructions need to be viewpoint-neutral. I've asked Mr. Kendrick if he will be the timekeeper. Each individual gets three minutes, and Mr. Kendrick will stand when there is one minute left, and he will remind you when your time is up, and you will be able... You will not be able to speak any longer. So on first is Jose Rosales.
Your time. Thank you, board. First of all, I just want to say thank you. As a PISD product, I was able to go to AB Freeman, Garfield, Southeastern Media, and Southeastern High School. All five of my siblings graduated from Southeastern High School, so thank you for everybody that has served on this board as long as you have to give me the opportunity to have an education and to be here with you guys. I guess last time that I was here, last month, there was a lot of commotion, I guess, and so the topic was true unity. I think that's what we all want. We all want to be together more as a family. And I was informed that there was a lot of believers, men and women of God, God-fearing men and women on this board, Christians. And one of the main things that Christ teaches us as believers, as I'm a follower of Christ myself, is that He tells us to love God and to love your neighbor as yourself. So the only way that we're going to be able to have true unity is to be able to show love to the person on your right, love to the person on your left, and I hope that now that the election process is over, all the formalities have been done, that we no longer need to attack each other in the paper, the media, the social media. All that does is divide one another and makes people feel defensive. It's counterproductive, and it's time-consuming. So as to the board or anyone that's here that is a believer of Christ, I just ask you that when you're acting or reacting to certain of the things that are said or done, do you think that if Christ was sitting next to you, do you believe he'd be proud of what you're doing or saying or what you're posting? And for the people that are not believers, I pray that you think about the person that you hold very dearly, would they be proud of what you're doing? So my sister being sworn in last month, I pray for this board. I pray for everybody here, and I pray for us to come together, no more this side of the tracks versus that side of the tracks. It's one PISD, one family. Thank you, board.
Next, we have Mr. Edward Valdez. Mr. Valdez, are you here?
Test, test, okay? Excuse me. Good evening, my name is Edward Valdez, and I am a recent graduate from Pasadena High School, class of 2020, and I am also a former junior to seek at a PHS golfer or Pasadena High School. I am here to speak up against the construction of the $27 million administrative building. Because I am thinking of the student of Pasadena High School, I would like to see them to have better school with better restrooms and better air conditioning. Yeah. Excuse me. Students should not have to deal with faulty air conditioning and outdated restrooms. It is not only Pasadena High School that needs to be rebuilt. Sam Rayburn and Southeastern High School had portables that should be replaced. had portables that should be replaced with more permanent classroom and better restroom, too. How can administrators think of building an administration building before they rebuild our schools? And I was surprised to hear that French is not being offered at Pasadena High School anymore. It is a good class for students who wants to learn other language, another language, other than Spanish. I would have liked to learn French, German, Arabic, Japanese, and Degalog. How can administrators think of building an administration building before they hired more teachers? Furthermore, if you move the building to Mickey Gilley Boulevard, Pasadena ISD will never be the same. This location here at Cherry Brook is a more central location. Stop wasting taxpayers' money.
Hold one minute.
Than plan of relocating. This administration needs -- excuse me. This administration building needs to end. Thank you.
Ms. Yan Robé.
Where, Yan? Good evening, school board members, and Superintendent Powell. My name is Yan Robé. I taught for 14 years at Pasadena High School as a French teacher. I was one of two French teachers there. After I left, I was not replaced, and they did not hire a Spanish teacher. Was that for budgetary reasons? And yet, the administration can afford a $27 million administration building? Recently, the other French teacher retired, and he is not replaced either. That makes Spanish being the only other language other than English taught at Pasadena High School. This is not the case at Sam Rayburn. There is a post for a French teacher position there. At Dobi, students have the choice of taking Spanish, French, German, and Latin. Is that to say that there is more demand for other languages at Dobi than at Pasadena High School? Or is it the politics of getting students to take Spanish or test out of it because they already know the language? Students take bilingual classes in lower grades to test out of Spanish in high school. It would be beneficial to students if they could take other languages at Pasadena High School. Learning French in high school changed the trajectory of my life. That is one reason I chose to be a French teacher. I find it ironic, though, that often Spanish-speaking students are put into Spanish class instead of French when it is their language of their choice. Six years ago, I witnessed that, where a French student was taken out of my class and put in a Spanish class against her will. And in speaking to a Dobi parent, her high school student was also put in Spanish class when she wanted to take French. Our district has become focused, in my view, on increasing the numbers of students testing in advanced placement classes rather than student learning. I've spoken to associate superintendent Rhonda Palmer about this matter. She tried to reassure me that when there are enough students enrolled in French, they will offer it again. But how can students take the class if there's no teacher available to offer or promote French? And how can they sign up for French if they're told they must take French, take Spanish before they can take French? It seems odd to me, in a high school where a population of more than 85% of Hispanics, that the students will only be able to take Spanish class.
Time's up, Yan.
So I hope.
Thank you, Ms. Robé.
Learning another language.
Mr. Herman Williams. Your turn now.
Herman Williams. I've been living -- I've lived in the Pasadena ISD School District for 66 and 1/2 years. Started in Freeway Manor, Edgebrook, went to Genoa, went to South Houston, lived in South Houston for 28 years, and moved to Pasadena. I did not have air conditioning the entire time I was in high school or any of my 12 grades, and I live on one block south of North Pasadena, in Pasadena. So I want to make a note, and I'm here, I guess, more than anything else because I wasn't here last meeting, May 18. And I don't usually let anything that somebody says do or whatever bother me. But I do -- did get disturbed very deeply that we had individuals that showed up here without knowledge for what they were criticizing. And also, the supposed winner of the election for trustee being the headstrong of what was going on, and first attacking her opponent for something that she was able to do, and that's do a vote recount. She didn't understand why she needed a vote count. It didn't have -- she didn't have to understand it. It was her right to do that. But I did some other searching on that while I was. And you know, there's some things that came out, and if you look at the voting boxes that happened on this, one thing was very strikingly different. If I was trying to decide what I would do to protest election, I would look at South Houston, box 2993. No greater vote ever in the history of that boxes for the PISD elections of any kind. Now, that was one-fourth of her title, her total vote count that came in. But also, what was kind of parallel, looking at it, it kind of paralleled with the mayoral race that went along at the same time.
One minute, Herman.
Matter of fact, the vote count in 29 was exactly the same. The 93 box, she beat the mayor by four votes. So it looked like there were some things that was going on over there, probably not illegal, but something you ought to take a look at. That is one thing that I think was said, and it should not have been chastised the person for doing what was her right. On this -- this building right here, I've served on the last three community facilities, people, about this building right here for three bond elections. This building has been targeted. It needs to go down. It's as bad a shape as some of these buildings y'all are all talking about.
Okay, Fred, Herman.
Okay, all right. I'll be back next week.
Okay. At this time, we're going to set the date for the next regular meeting, suggest Tuesday, July 27, 2021. And do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Was that Mr. Phelan? Seconded by Mr. Phelan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.[1746.02]